They're not like keeping up with it.
I think I'm gonna have Robin put in the minutes that Mr. Conley was excused.
Yep.
Make some clarification so we don't get caught up in a no-show thing.
Do we want to vote as to whether we want to excuse him? Do you want to mark him down for?
I told Robin Cheese to reprimand him when he comes back.
His final grade for the class will be impacted.
All right, I think it should be fine. I always get this message at the start, and I gotta do so.
You should have your ten minutes.
I can't use a laptop. I need a mouse.
Need a mouse.
There you go. Let me know when you're ready, Robin. You know what's that?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 2nd, 2023 Newton Board of Selectmen's Meeting. We're starting just after 6 o'clock, 6:03. And I'd like to call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball.
I'd like to welcome everybody that's here and everybody that's joining us via Zoom. So first on the agenda, board appointments. Nomination to the state health officer.
So, Mr. Jimin, as you and fellow board members are aware, our health officer has resigned. The deputy health officer has stepped up in his absence and has expressed an interest in becoming the recommendee to the health officer position. And it's unclear at this juncture whether or not we're going to need a deputy at this point, so we can leave that vacant until we hear from the new health officer about the workload and demands of the position. And we have one applicant. It has been on the website advertised that we're looking for soliciting participation. And the deputy, Michael Franzoso, has written, sent a resume, and is expressing an interest in being nominated by this board to the New Hampshire Division of Public Health Services as the town's health officer.
And I don't know if we want to touch upon, there are certain restrictions we have for who we put in this position, right? If I've got that right. Because it's a state-qualified, I guess you could say, position, it's...
Official state position, correct?
Yeah, we can't necessarily, you know...
Appoint.
Exactly. So, so this is a...
Nomination?
This is a nomination, but it's somebody who's duly qualified by the state to do this job, as he has been doing as the deputy. So it's not, it's not like we're taking somebody off the street and, you know...
That's a good point. These appointments are provisional. As of June of 2021, within the first year of their appointment, they have to take a three-hour course on probably trends and ideas or statutes. And should Mike be recommended by this board, I will make sure that he's aware of that requirement. And they're calling the appointment when they make it provisional, because he has to complete that three-hour course within 12 months of being appointed. So I'm pretty sure, Robin, we only have one candidate?
Yep.
One.
Yeah. It's not a long list of people who have the qualification.
Which I can't believe.
Right. But the good news is, he's been in town doing this type of work for...
Right. So he's familiar with what's going on and everything.
And he still likes us, so that's the plus.
Does that mean you're gonna make a...
I'm gonna move to nominate Michael S. Franzoso to the state of New Hampshire to be Newton's health, for Newton's health officer position.
Seconded by Joe? Any discussion? None here? None on Zoom?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be unanimous.
The only thing I would add is maybe we can get Mike on an upcoming agenda just to say hi, so to speak, you know?
Are you planning on doing that? But he's traveling?
He's traveling, yes.
Yeah, no worries.
So, yeah, we'll invite him again.
Next available. Yeah, awesome.
I think that's a good idea.
Very good. Next is the trustee of the trust funds.
As you know, Mr. Simone is now a selectman and has longer served as the trustee of the trust funds. That vacancy was created. The trustees met April 24th and have nominated to this board for appointment Nancy Kozlowski. And that's their recommendation to this board this evening.
So my only question is, we did put it out to the community, right?
I assume they did.
I believe it was posted.
Okay. Because, because the key thing to remember here is, this is an elected position, right? So we're nominating to fill an elected position for whatever it is the next 10 months, or whatever, until there's an election. So typically, you know, we put it out there, ask people to, you know, apply. If there's more than one, we have them come here and introduce themselves, you know? So I'm, I'm fine with this recommendation of the other trustees, as long as we're sure we, you know, transparency. We put it out there and others are not watching this right now and saying, oh, if I have...
I believe the other trustees have talked to other people, and there was very little interest.
Okay. I wouldn't doubt that.
But you raise a very good point, and I'm not sure whether or not it was put out there. I don't know, would it be our responsibility or the trustees themselves to do it? So if, if that's the case, maybe we want to hold off with this appointment until your next meeting and make sure that all the things that the board desires take place be put in place.
I think, I think that's what I'd, I'd like to do. I hear what you're saying, Joe. That word has gotten around, but you know, some, some people, and I'm sure Nancy is highly qualified and just, it's keeping with what we've done. I think it's worth it to put out there, just on the website. We don't have to put it in the paper or anything like that, you know, just on the website.
Yeah, it's only proper that we do that. We've been trying to rid the good old boy network type of attitude that people have and think about the way that this town is run with all the appointments and people being elected and stuff. So the more transparency that we can present and have, and present to the public, the better.
And, and part of that transparency is right now, right? We can say in this meeting that, you know, we have the opening as the result of Joe being on the board now. And if anybody's interested, we can, there'll be a post out there, I'm sure, in the next 24 hours or so. And if, if, we can give you Joe's home phone number. Call Joe. Joe can tell you all about the judge, so...
Joe would love to hear from you.
But I'm sure, I'm sure Nancy is very qualified. It's just a matter of giving others a shot, so...
And we appreciate her stepping up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Most definitely. So we'll put that on for the next meeting. Citizens Forum. Anybody that would like to step up and have anything to say about what's going on in the meeting tonight? Nobody here? Anybody on Zoom?
No.
All right, very good. And as far as that goes, I think, quick discussion while we're on Citizens Forum that we should definitely put out there on the town website, that the Citizens Forum is, is being presented so that people can come and speak on things that are strictly on the agenda for that evening, and that they should be limited to a three-minute verbal discussion of what they'd like to address, so as that we don't have people feeling as though that they can come up and just keep going, so we can keep the meeting proceedings going properly.
Be done tomorrow.
All right, very good. Thank you. Administration, ARPA updates, please.
Good evening. Ooh, I'm losing my voice. I'll be a perfect wife. Okay. So, just to bring you up to date, this, the most recently, we discussed the generator at the transfer station, and I did tell you last meeting that we'd keep you posted on that. As it happens, this Monday, May 8th, the generator is being installed. So they're gonna start at, from what I understand, about 8 o'clock in the morning. The chief, the fire chief has already gone down to inspect the location. Hafner has been notified. So everything is going along quite smoothly. They're gonna be opening just for this installation. Obviously, nothing else was gonna happen on a Monday. So that's very positive. Again, for those in TV land, this is as a result of the American Plan Recovery Act, so it was not a tax burden. This was all as a result of the ARPA money, which is grant money. Also, the fire department rescue boat has been delivered and registered. And our staff, I believe we have 16 that are boat safety certified. They're extremely happy that we finally have a boat that if we need to rescue, it's gonna allow them to respond properly and quickly. You also should know, you've heard me since last August talking about the filtration system for the portable filters we bought that will actually capture and destroy the coronavirus, not just capture it like some air filters do. They don't really destroy it. They capture it, but they keep it and then put it back out in the air. I wondered where they were. I'm like, what is going on? So I called the bookkeeper and asked her if she could just check to see if the check has ever been cashed. Sure enough, it had been. So I contacted the company and he said, no, we're waiting for your check. I'm like, I can prove that it's been cashed. I sent a copy of the front and the back, thank you, to the bookkeeper. And he had to research it. This company is in California. Come to find out, it was cashed by that bank that collapsed in California. What was that? Silicon Valley, I think? Yep. So it took a while. As of last week, we finally, the funds are where they're supposed to be with this company and the filtration systems, the units. We have 10 of them coming, and they have been shipped. So that's finally good news.
Nice job.
I know, unbelievable. I'm like, what is going on? I keep talking about it. You guys think, must think I have, I mean, La La Land here, you know? So also, the American Recovery Plan Act, we have to do annual reports. And as you all know, because I sent it to you Sunday, I completed our report on time, on April 30th, to the U.S. Treasury. We have to account for how the money is spent. And there's certain ways, there's certain things we're allowed to do and not allowed to do. So many times when people call and say, oh, you know, let's use ARPA money. Well, there's restrictions that we need to follow in order to use that money. But so far, our obligations that we have spent since March of 2021, so two years, is $383,348.24. And as you'll note on that Excel spreadsheet I gave you, that's right to the penny. I was so excited. It's great when the numbers match. To give you a quick repack, again, I won't read all 300 pages, but only kidding. We spent, for the, in two years, a stipend to do with all our first responders, police, fire department, highway department, election workers, and transfer station. All of that totaled $92,304.29. We also spent money on sanitation after, you know, public events, whether it was voting at the fire department, events here where we had a lot of people. We brought people in to sanitize the building, including, if you remember, that December, we actually had to close town hall for 14 days because of the COVID outbreak here in town. I mean, with our town hall people. So it included paying for that. That was $11,740.64 for all those sanitations. We also had some damage done to the bush farm, again, from overuse, ATVs, that kind of thing. We needed signs were destroyed, Blanding's turtles were destroyed, lots of things, but we did spend $3,200 on that. We also had technology and security, a total of $108,589.35. And this was a variety of things. As you know, we upgraded security, our cameras and our internet at the town beach in Graney Park. We upgraded to a new repeater for our police, fire, and highway. We ordered a large multi-size printer for our planning board. We upgraded software and virus security as the recommendation from Diane for our town hall computers. And we added keypad door locks for the EOC. Excuse me. Administration, so that's everything to do with supplies for the ARPA committee, any kind of payroll, which is not that much, and that include not only myself, but if anyone else was paid to come in and help. That was for the two years, $9,000. I'm losing my voice. I'm gonna be perfect. $9,000. That's what my husband says, yay. $401.39. Transfer station, really all about the engineering costs in the generator. That was $32,333.95. Also, our first responder equipment, which included, so police, fire, and EOC, they didn't have funds available for the equipment that they needed. Also, due to COVID-19, our town beach was heavily burdened with residents out of work, resulting in water-related incidents. So we were able to buy a fire rescue boat. We used, we also bought AEDs for police, fire, some of our town buildings. And the electronic message board was used to keep residents abreast of what was going on. Highway department, as you know, we ordered and received that waste oil-water heater for the Butler Building. That was $15,500. Our town clerk, tax collector, she needed a new voting boost, again, because of social distancing. She thought it made sense. Let's get some. And you approved that. That was $7,371.80. We also did multiple vaccine clinics and boosters, and our first responders and staff were paid, and that was throughout the two years. That totaled $17,069.6. And, let's see, revenue replacement, that was, again, town clerk needed the touchless credit card and a printer. She needed a multi-function printer, so she didn't have to go out into the kitchen area where the public went. That was the first year of COVID when things were pretty rough, and that was 2007, 99, 98. So we completed that, that second report. They're due the 30th of April every year. And then we have many reports in between. But it basically was very successful. I think our residents were very lucky that we got this, because it was not a tax burden for anything that we purchased. So that's that. The message board, the EOC message board, so that grant money totaled 100, and I think I sent this to you, $181,242.24. And that money, as you know, the residents approved that Warren article, that money's gonna be transferred from wherever the heck it is into our newly approved by the residents, EOC revolving fund. You should know that I'm writing, or I've written two more grants, so the checks haven't come in yet, but those total $87,771.60. And lastly, I'm still working on grants for the highway department, that twin culvert down in Country Pond. And also, I'm working with the police department. We're trying to set up not only an EOC warming shelter at the PD, but a training area at the police department. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
My voice lasted.
I'd like to say outstanding job on that report that you had to submit for the COVID money. All right, we're on staff reports. Sam, you wanna?
Sam Zanini, I'm here on behalf of the building department. I promised to only take maybe an hour, can I?
We'll give you an hour and a half.
Presentation that I'm gonna give. Anyways, I am here. The board had asked me back in February to take a look at surrounding towns, surrounding towns, and see what they charge fees, and see if there was a possibility if, that we could clean up some language on our building permit applications, the process, basically the process, so that was easier to understand and see if we could streamline anything, if possible. So as I sent that document, this proposed document to electronically, I also have hard copies. Mind if I give you a hard, it might be a little easier to read? The shaded areas?
Yep.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because it's not really, it's not really showing up super well. Actually, can we get around that? We're gonna try to share this document. There we go. So, on this one here, the shaded, it's hard to see the shaded portions of it, but you'll see, we can go slow and explain it to the people at home. But anything shaded that you have next to it will be crossed out on the proposed fee schedule. I'll follow along on paper. But I want to thank you too for your patience, because I was supposed to be here two weeks ago. That didn't work out, so here I am. So this, we took, again, we took a look at fees and procedures, the way we, we moved through the application and inspection process. So Shanti Wolf developed this a couple of years ago. He came to the board of selectmen, and he revised not only the format, but the fee schedule. It was approximately, maybe three years ago now. So here we are. This, this is a working, his working document, so. The first portion is residential building permits. It's for one- and two-family residential units, additions, renovations, and accessory buildings over 500 square feet. So what we did was, we added language in here, because it was unclear whether or not, if you had a two-family structure that you were trying to build in town, whether or not somebody would be paying separate fees for the two, for the two units or just one. So we just added language. We typically, we always have, but it wasn't anywhere writing. So we added language, I added language in here that says each dwelling unit shall require a separate building and sub-trade permits, plus all applicable fees. So we've been doing that all along. We just added the language to kind of clean it up and clarify where we were going with that. So there are some fee increases. The majority of the fee increases are for primarily new construction, new development. Okay, we tried, we tried, and I'll explain that to you as I get down to the smaller projects, that there are not many changes for the people here, living here and trying to do work to their homes or businesses. So the first portion, residential building permits, and this is anything over 500 square feet. So if you're a developer that comes to town, you're building a new house, two-family house, brand new, from scratch, and/or you're living in town, you're doing a very large project, this would affect, this would affect you. And so, looking at, we, we looked at East Kingston, Kingston, Merrimack, Atkinson, Newton, and just for the heck of it, I looked at Salem, just because I worked there as well. So I looked at their fees. We were anywhere between, on this particular section, we were anywhere between 20% lower to 100% lower than all of those towns, for a house that's approximately 3,000 square feet house, a brand-new house being built. So that's pretty significant. So, so I am proposing, there was an application fee of $360, and I am proposing to increase that to $400, and to double the square footage, the price per square foot, from 10 cents to 20. And that'll get us, that's gonna raise our fees for a new home or a project over 500 square feet by about 30%. We would still be, we would still be lower than most of the towns I looked at, 90% of them, so. Okay. The, if you go down, you follow that, again, again, new construction, our new home, licensed trades performing work on new construction. The fee always was, prior to this being adopted several years ago, if we go back 10 years, it always was 180. That's under number four. It always was 180. I don't know why, three years ago, it came down to 80, but it requires, that service requires just as many resources as the others, as the mechanical, plumbing, electrical. So I'm proposing to bring that back to where it was, to the 180. And again, that's only new construction. Impact fees, nothing changed there. So here we are, additions, renovations, this is important for the people at home watching, additions, renovations, and accessory buildings up to 500 square feet. Our prices were pretty in line with a lot of the other towns, and I'm not proposing to make any changes to increase those fees. You know, I think the voters spoke pretty clearly when they voted this budget season.
Right.
And I don't see any need to raise any of their fees. So if they're doing small projects at home, whether it's a, you know, kitchen remodel, a bathroom remodel, a couple of bathrooms, any other interior renovations, they won't see any increase in fees. Okay, this is mainly, most, most of these increases are driven towards new construction. Okay? I'll go over a couple that are, that I'm proposing to increase, but later on, but I don't see any reason to raise these. If we could scroll down to the second page, commercial industrial buildings. Yep. Number two, you got it. Thank you. So, number 14, towards the top of the page, this is, this is sort of one of those miscellaneous permits, and they were solar panels. And so solar panels are huge right now. We have a lot of them, a lot of installations in town. The way, we're way too low on this fee. We charge $80. Many of the towns charge per thousand. They charge, they get, they get a fee per thousand, the dollar cost per thousand. Many of these applications take hours to review. Sometimes, a lot of times, they come in with inaccurate information, inaccurate code references, stuff like that. So they, they were spending a lot of time. There's a lot of time involved with myself and the fire chief communicating back and forth on these type of inspections. So I'm proposing to charge, they, they oftentimes submit written contracts that they have with the customers, and some of these cost up to like $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 to install. And we're charging an $80 fee for all the plan review, many communications back and forth with their engineers, inspections and everything. We're charging $80. So I'm recommending that we charge $6 per thousand. So...
Per, can I ask you?
Sure.
Per thousand?
On the contract, whatever the cost of the project is.
Yeah, so we should make that clear there.
We can make that change.
Because it says, right now, it says $6 per thousand solar panels.
Right, right.
So, people might think, oh, if I have a thousand solar panels...
Yeah, I understand. Yep, that's not a problem. So it'd be based on the dollar cost value.
Sounds good.
Yeah. So, and then down to number two. So there's, like I said, there's no, and the only other one, there's one up top that I missed. Okay, that's number... Okay, that's number eight, swimming pools. So on swimming pools, we were charging $70 for swimming pools. I'm proposing that we keep that fee for above-ground pools at $70, but charge 100 for in-ground swimming pools. Again, just because of the amount of resources it takes, it takes a little more time, it might take an extra visit, a little bit more plan review, because they're a little bit more complex than an above-ground swimming pool. That's consistent, actually it's low, it's very low with the other towns, but they're higher, but it's still low enough. So commercial industrial building permits includes additions, renovations and accessory buildings. And then again, just some language, added language to clean things up in that, so that there's no misinterpretation on like tenant fit-ups. Okay, so we do a shell, we do one big shell, a building, now we want to subdivide it into four units. There was no language that's, we always, we have precedent that we would, we would charge for the tenant fit-ups, but we're going to add language that says, to make it happen. So all subdivision and tenant fit-ups shall require separate building permits, separate building and sub-trade permits plus applicable fees. So it's pretty clear now, you have a shell, you want to put three units in it, you're going to pay, you're going to pay for the shell, and then you're going to pay for three separate tenant fit-ups, consistent with all the other towns. Down to A, on the foundations, just added some language in there, there's no change, just because some people don't realize how many inspections we do for a foundation or what's required, so they'll have a better understanding when they read this, that we do, we do three inspections for a foundation. One is the soils inspection to verify that we have good soils there, we're not, we're not trying to put a foundation on tree roots or anything like that, or bad soils, poorly drained soils. And then the second inspection, we go back a second time for footings, and then we go back a third time for walls and drainage. And so that just gives them a better idea of what to expect out of us and how many times we have to go. Change to the square footage, left the application fee alone, change to the square footage, and we doubled the square footage, which was consistent, it's still lower than some of the other towns, but it's, but it starts to get you where you should be. At the bottom of the page, number three, apartment buildings, that's all new language because we never really had anything to properly price out an apartment building. If you had an apartment building come to town, we would, we had, we have one and two family, but then we don't, we don't have anything, there would be no way of trying to figure out how we price an apartment building. So I took some language from what we use in Salem, and then, so now if you have an apartment building come in, the building permit application fee would be $500 plus 40 cents a square foot, consistent with, at that point, it's no longer, it's a residential building, but it doesn't fall under the residential building code because it's more than a two-family structure, so it's, we would be charging commercial rates, so it would be $500 plus 40, 40 cents a square foot for the habitable space. And then the, and then I have a list of the sub-permits would be per unit, per apartment cost. That was never in there, but I think it's a good idea to add it in there. And then on the last page, this is just a lot of new language that we added, just you talking transparency earlier, so just gives people a better understanding of where we're at. Number, so number one was in there. The important note, so important note that was there, but I'll say it again, that people need to go to the fire department to make sure that they're getting the proper permits over there. Number two, we added, again, transparency, inspection fees were never on any of these documents, it was certainly available to people if they had a question about it, but it was never on there. Currently, so currently it's $38 for residential inspections and $50 for commercial inspections. That, again, that's about 20 to 50% lower than a lot of the surrounding towns. I'm proposing to increase the residential inspection fee from 38 to 40 and leave the commercial one at 50. It will still be 20 to 50% lower than all the other towns, but I'm just looking to leave it there. There's a note there that says that that cost is already included in all the other fees. It's not like we're, this isn't adding, this is just kind of to be transparent, to show what we charge for an inspection fee. Number three, just again, inspections are performed Monday through Saturday to give people an idea of when I'm available, or when anyone here is available, Monday through Saturday, based on availability of the building inspector and contractor, homeowner or business owner. All inspections require a 48-hour notice. A lot of times we can get there sooner than that, but you need to have something there that says, you have to have some parameters there to say, hey, you know, you need a few days. Certificate of Occupancies, so this was a change, this was kind of an important change that we made. So I was talking with the town administrator a few weeks ago about this too, and then I reached out to the assessor, and I thought it would be... Can you, Raman, do you mind? Oh, so you're there, okay, so let me... Certificate of Occupancy, so residential. I don't know why I have... Excuse me, one second, I forgot where I am here. Yes, okay. So if we could go scroll one more page. Okay, so, yeah, this is perfect. So this is our current, this is our current certificate of occupancy for residential occupancies, and it only requires right now the building department representative and the fire department representative to sign off on it. So if we have a new, it's only for new construction, it's only for new homes, and if we, if, we're the only ones that sign off it. So I spoke to the town administrator a couple of weeks ago, and then I reached out to assessing last Wednesday and asked the assessor, hey, what do you think about having your signature block on this form? Because currently, right now, if we go and the fire chief and I show up and we sign off on an occupancy the first week in March and we file it, there was never really a system in there for the town assessor to know right away that we signed off on the occupancy. So she goes in and checks for construction, I guess, when she can, right, at her own. So if we had somebody moving in March and she didn't get to the file until late April, she misses a whole year in taxes that she can't, she can't reassess, she can't assess it until the following April. So we thought it'd be a good idea to get her signature block on every single residential occupancy permit, so that way there, for a second, somebody's getting ready to move in, she knows about it, and then she can tax it appropriately. Because I have a funny feeling there's, there may be a lot of those, those monies that don't get caught up with until maybe another year.
It actually forces necessary communication.
Sure, definitely. So silly question is this, so this is a physical signature, right?
This is a physical signature.
So they, whoever, the homeowner or builder or whatever, would have to come in and find all you guys, okay?
Yep, so we go out there, I go...
So when Jim's saying that, you couldn't get a better form of communication, right? Because that you have to physically find the assessor.
She knows, she'll know immediately that, okay, now the certificate of occupancy has been issued, and now she can tax it appropriately.
Yeah, sounds good.
Because I think there was a lot of, that was, that was, that kind of, they kind of got lost, I think, for a little while, you know? So I go out to the site and I sign it, fire chief same thing, but I mean, they could come in and see the assessor, they don't really do all that. So I'm proposing that change on residential occupancies on that form. And if we just scroll one more page, two of two, just so the people at home can see it, that's, that's what that is. I added, I added, so now we're into, where are we?
Assessor, planning board.
Yep, so now I'm at the commercial, now I'm at commercial, right there. Okay, so did the same thing on the commercial. The commercial occupancy, again, it was just the building department and the fire chief. I talked to the fire chief today, he told me that he didn't mind me changing the language. Before it was the building inspector and then the building inspector's name, the fire department and the fire chief's name. And I, I talked to him and he said he would be good with just having the fire department representative, the building department representative, that way there, he has a designee, if he's out of town, if he's sick, if I'm sick, or whatever.
He's shaking his head behind you, he doesn't, he never...
He was good with it. So, and then again, adding the town assessor for all commercial occupancies to that signature block. And then we also, the planning board expressed their desire to also be on this signature block. I have a signature block on commercial occupancies, so that they'll...
I saw that too, I think that's a great idea.
I'm proposing that as well.
For the, for the similar reason, you know, that it's, it's direct communication.
Right, and I think, I think the fees, like I said, the fees go up a little on new construction, the other stuff, no, but I think that, I think that just the taxation portion alone and that, that's going to help a lot.
Yeah.
As far as the...
Overall, you've cleaned it up quite a bit.
The assessor, yeah. And so one last thing, there were questions whether or not some people would walk away and they really weren't sure what they needed for inspections. So this is an old, we used to have, let me find this, we used to have an old yellow card, I'm sure people remember, there was an old yellow card that looked like this.
I still have one hanging in my barn from 1989.
Scroll down a little bit more.
I'm scared to death to throw those things out, I still have a bunch of them.
Stapled inside my barn.
2015.
Yeah, one more, Raman, thank you.
It's not yellow.
Yeah, so these were around forever. Yeah, so for whatever reason, several years ago, the department head did not, at the time, I don't even remember who it was, but they decided not to use them anymore. I'm going to propose that we bring it back for larger projects. It gives people, and I don't think it needs to get, I don't think it would need to get approved by the board or selectmen, we may add some more blocks to it, just to have people get a better understanding of what they need when they walk away for inspections, what's required, because a lot of them don't know. And so they'll post this, and then I'll sign it when I get there, and so I'm looking to bring that back.
Great move.
That's, that's about it. Appreciate your time, I don't know what the board wants to do, but, and I'm also proposing that maybe this, this doesn't, I don't think it needs to go into effect immediately, especially for the fees, we have some projects already going, so I, I would propose maybe these changes go into effect June 1st or July 1st, whatever the board wants to do.
So I'm thinking I might make a motion to approve the changes to the permit fee schedule. Make sure I get all the permit fee schedule, commercial certificate of occupancy, residential certificate of occupancy, and I think that's basically it, right?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Effective June 1st, 2023.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Joe Simone.
So I'm good with that, I think we need to have some signs made up and put in the planning board office, or wherever they're getting, you know, so people when they come in, they know that the fees are going up on this date, like, just to avoid anything that could, you know what I mean? Like we should have some signage up somewhere that says, our fee schedule is going up on June 1st.
Should be posted to the website also.
Website. We could put some down in the billing department too.
Right, well, the building department, exactly.
Yeah, on the website.
The website's fine, but some people don't even go to the website, they just come in and go to the building department.
We can have, just post it on the bulletin board down there too, when they come in.
Something, I'm just trying to avoid.
It's visible in a lot of places that way.
Yep.
Sounds good. Any other discussion?
So, I'll let you make your motion and then I'll, one more comment. I'll let you vote on your motion, it's good, it's not going to affect, it's not...
Okay. No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved, unanimous?
So I just wanted to stress, like the smaller projects that people are doing at home, this really shouldn't affect them, you know?
Very good.
Appreciate the work you've put into this. And, you know, to me, this is, one of those things is, this type of thing, we should not be afraid to kind of steal, if you will, from other communities.
Sure.
So we remain competitive and we don't, we don't get lost in this bubble of, of our town if, if, you know, other, if, if there are better ways of doing things in other communities, we really need to embrace them, and I think this is one of them, which is kind of cool, so. Uh-oh.
So I don't know if this is appropriate, because I'm not sure what staff reports mean, or if it could be department head reports. Is it okay if I can talk, Jim? For conservation, actually. So you should know, especially in TV land, Conservation owns a property with a conservation easement on it on 41 Thornell Road. Behind this property, we abut another conservation parcel called the Cuscorra property, and we have, that also has a conservation easement on it that leads into the town forest. Unfortunately, there has been an abutter that is moving all the boundary markers. Conservation Commission has had to hire an engineer, he's been out there all last week. The markers, I believe, are set in place, and what we plan to do, and that's why I wanted to tell the board, is once we get a copy of the actual plan, Southeast Land Trust, which is the one that holds the easement on this other property, is actually going to come down here with us, and we're going to invite the abutters, who have all received a letter from me already, that something is happening, and we understand it could be maybe a misunderstanding, and we want you to know that we're going to give you a copy of the survey, so that is happening. When I spoke to the engineer at the end of last week, he said, I just want you to know, I'm down here now, I'm fixing the markers where they're supposed to be, and I want you to know, I think I know who's doing it, and he's going to move it again. So we obviously have a resident that's not happy, but I'm going to keep you posted, and it's, it's really too bad because it's cost us a lot of money. This is actually the third year in a row these markers have been moved, so that's really too bad. So that's on the conservation piece. If I could talk on the stewardship committee piece, we're a subcommittee of conservation, and that property is Hidden Acres, which is the 41 Thornell Road. Unfortunately, this easement, the owner, one of the, the husband of the ownership here, he actually died on New Year's Day, and so now we have a woman there that is trying to keep this conservation easement intact, along with the stewardship committee, and we go down there and we help, we do whatever we can do. Sometimes it's mowing, sometimes it's getting the vine off the house, sometimes it's painting, whatever we can do. But I'm letting you know, because I'm probably, we're probably, the committee itself is going to reach out and look for help, maybe Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, to try to help. I understand that some people might want to put a little community garden in there, that might help her, but if you hear of anyone that's willing, looking for a project, we certainly need help, the stewardship committee really needs help on this, so I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have to look into, too, to see if we can't recoup some of the costs that we're paying to have that land resurveyed, if that culprit is caught red-handed. we're paying to have that land resurved, if, um, that culprit is caught red-handed, and get them to, uh, pay for all the damages.
Just put up a game camera there, looking at the markers.
Right.
That's all.
Put a few of them up around in the location.
That's, that's what I would do, is put up a game camera, right, looking at those markers, you know?
Right. Thank you.
Do we know whether or not moving boundaries is against state law?
It is.
It is.
Absolutely. Are they, are they just stakes? There's no rock walls? I'm trying to look at it on a map, but it's too wooded, so I can't really tell.
Right, no, it's, it's all right now, it's stakes that he's, this person is moving, yes.
So it's not, it's not.
It's not stone walls.
Not stone walls.
No.
Because that would even worse.
That would even be better, yes, yes, absolutely. So we're working on this. Again, the engineer's been really great. Um, we had to work around a budget, just to get him to go in there to begin with. Um, but yeah, we'll keep you posted, because clearly, if there was a way we can get the game cameras out there.
Definitely.
Then we, uh, we can't point fingers unless we have proof, so.
Yeah, we definitely need the game cameras.
Right, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Trish.
You're welcome.
Chief, did you want to give a report?
No.
If, if not, I respectfully request.
He loves to talk.
But I think, before the chief speaks, I, I don't think the intent was this agenda item to be a, uh, like, a free-for-all, like, just.
Correct.
Right, it was just, any department heads were given the heads up that they were on the agenda, right?
Right.
So if you're surprised, chief, it's okay.
Okay.
Because.
My, my whole thing, chief, with asking you to come up is just this. We had a conversation with the, um, police chief, Chief Jewett, about, um, getting information out there, because there seems to be, um, a lot of people in this town that are unaware of what is actually taking place in their town, to where everything has been getting taken care of without incidents, so that nobody has any worries. And I think that it's about time that we start putting a police and a fire log out there, just so that the town can become well aware of what is actually taking place in this town. It might be a little bit eye-opening for them, to understand why we've been going to them, looking for these monies, to be able to afford things. And I, I pulled up your report that you handed in, and if you want to do a roundabout on that, or I can read it out loud, if you don't mind.
You can, because I'll be honest, when I seen that on the agenda, I thought it was our monthly meetings.
Yep.
That the department heads were having. Uh, so, i-if you don't mind, we know our call volume. The biggest thing, uh, the two biggest things, just.
No names.
For the board is, one, uh, the rigid inflatable, the 15-foot boat, uh, is in the fire station. It's getting its, uh.
Whatever.
Trailer plate, its registration, so you'll probably see it out within the next month. And the other thing, if there's some way, social media, which is in my letter I sent you this past week, we've had two individuals drive to the fire station, uh, thinking that it's staffed 24/7, 365, and they were extremely lucky on both times, that there was a human being still at that station, because that could have turned out drastically the wrong way. They need to call 911. Not, I mean, if they're going by the fire station, that's one thing, but if you have shortness of breath and chest pain, you should be dialing 911, not jumping in your car and driving to eight Merrimack Road and rolling the dice if somebody's there.
Because that time could be well wasted if no one's there to help them.
Yeah, this last one, the individual actually, the firefighter actually was leaving at 6:00 PM, and they pulled in, I think, at 6:05. He just happened to still be there.
Yep.
And we'll reach out to, uh, Mr. Landry, see if he can get something out for Sajum Woods, and I'll talk to Trish. Maybe she can get something to Pack of Meadows. Uh, yeah, both of them are extremely lucky, and this is an ongoing thing.
And, um, one other point of view while you're standing there is, the AEDs that you and Trish, um, got together and, and bought with the Opera Funds, our road agent, Mike Povero, um, actually had himself on call, right, one weekend, and actually used one of those AEDs to revive and, um, help one of our town residents out, because a road agent put himself on call to be able to be of service.
Uh, you have to mention in that group Deputy John Kane, EMS coordinator, he's the one that did the majority of the work with Trish doing the grant, right?
Yep. So this is what we're up against, with, without being able to man our fire station, and, and we're, as I'll read in the report, we're losing a couple of them, a couple more bodies. So, um, this life or death errand that we were just talking about is getting seriously worse, because we're not able to fund and do what we need to do. So, um, the town is, is starting to put a money value on, on your, on your own lives and the lives of your neighbors. So I wanted to make sure that that's put out there, because that's not to scare you, that's a fact. That is reality, and that is what's taking place in this town right now.
So, um, if I may, you want me to read the report?
Please.
Because I'm going to kind of, um, kind of just get to the highlights.
The overall, yeah.
Yeah, because it's, it's a pretty long report, it's got a lot going on. I think the key thing to keep in mind, though, is, uh, and this is from the chief, and you can jump in here, whatever I get wrong, but, uh, there was a total of 49 calls for service, not counting burn permits or planned life safety reviews. Incidents for April are as follows. Building fires, six. Rescue EMS calls, 28. Hazmet calls, one. Cover assignments, two. False alarms, two, and special incidents, 10. The total of incidents for the year so far is 223, compared to last year, with 188 incidents at the same time. So if we have any math majors out there, I think that's an increase of 20% sounds like. So we're already, haven't even gone through the first three months.
And it's actually, you're too short. If you go down the bottom, uh, you'll see that we couldn't staff to go twice, I believe it was, once to Merrimack and once to Amesbury, Mass. Mutually.
Newton, as you put in here, chief, Newton is the only town without any 24-hour coverage, and the residents are feeling it, you know? So, uh, this is, you know, to be frank, this is, is a true statement I'm about to say, is there are many residents who live in this town, have lived here for a long time, that don't understand how we manage emergency services and we don't have 24-hour coverage. They might have moved here from, you know, Haverhill or Amesbury or Methuen or whatever. Um, we don't have 24-hour coverage, so, um, this is what we're up against.
The, the biggest thing which the board knows, because a couple of board members went to Kingston last year for that regionalization meeting, the, and I was one that swore back in the 80s, I'll tell you what, to start, that the call and volley was the best thing since sliced bread. We are living it today. There is no call force. It, it's sad to say, you hit the nail on the head, you got a road agent going. There is no call force. Nobody wants to do this job. And I'm sure Chief Jewett will say the same thing. Nobody wants to do this.
So think about it, if you're, if you're the fire chief, and a lot of this can be said for the police, too, is you're the fire chief, you have a good employee, that, you know, they're chasing the hours, they're chasing the pay. And, and so, uh, I think later on tonight, we're going to be talking about hiring some people, and there's probably some people out there are going to say, "What are they hiring people? They're on a default budget." Well, this is based, it's default budgeted to fill those shifts that were in the default budget. So this is, this is actually a good news story when you hear that, you know, we have people to.
I'll, I'll be honest with you, even if it's, wasn't in the default budget, the town is at that crossroad.
Yeah.
And as Bob put it, if somebody wants to tell me what a life's worth, we're at that crossroad. And after tomorrow afternoon, I'll probably be up here in two weeks for another crossroad, which is down the bottom of that. And that'll be another hurdle.
And, and the only other thing I would add, and this goes for everybody, is, we've talked about it here, so we are in the, let me call it, the second month of our financial emergency, and there's a lot of the year to go. So the, the emergencies and the effect of the financial emergency are going to be felt by this town the further along we go in the year. Right now, everybody's like, "Oh, default budget, great." Well, wait until we get quarter four and stuff like that, so stay tuned, so.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks.
All right. Approvals. We're going to move on to summer positions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Last week's department head meeting, we had a discussion about some of the challenges the road agent is having, uh, with having one town employee working for him, out on our roads, patching holes by himself. Um, the thought came up that perhaps, uh, townwide, we could use a couple of, uh, summer help. Um, high school kids that can drive and can do the things that aren't getting done. Um, and it's short money for a long gain. And the proposal was two. Uh, one would be, uh, assigned to the highway department to assist, basically traffic control, so it doesn't get run over. Uh, the second, um, part-time, part-time summer help would be, um, to go around with the town buildings and do the things that are getting left behind because of other larger projects that need the attention. The road agent has indicated that, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, he believes he had money in his existing budget for summer help. Um, so that's, that can be done. Um, it's the, the second summer help that, um, we're going to have to look for the money for, but we just can't let things continue to slide. We just can't. So I wanted your permission to, uh, run an ad for two summer help, and ideally, we'll get some juniors or seniors from high school that want to make some dough before they go to college.
There you go.
The only, I'll, I'll be Mr. Doom and Gloom tonight. The only, the only thing you got to worry about, though, is what we can pay them, because they, if you're a high school student who wants to work this summer, you have plenty of opportunities to work in a lot of places in there. The salaries are, the wages are going up. So we should definitely give it a try, because as we've said before, you need out-of-the-box solutions to what we're going through. So it's really a nice thing to try, fingers crossed, that, that we have students who see the, the opportunity for what it is, right? That it's, it's a resume builder that might be better than fast food, you know, so.
I think we agree with $15 an hour, and we were concerned, because it might impact the attitude and feelings of existing employees who have been here for a while, that are hovering at that number themselves. But we need to be, um, attractive, so we thought $15 an hour would, would work.
Agreed.
Were there any others?
We need to make a motion to that effect. Then I'd like to make a motion that the, uh, the town administrator, along with the, uh, the highway supervisor or highway, uh, road agent, uh, post a, do some job postings for these positions.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. I don't think there's even any discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be unanimous.
Thank you.
Uh, unanticipated revenue, sale of tax map 12-1-1, and I believe that's Thornell Road.
That's correct, and we, we did receive, um, payment for that. Um, the sale wasn't finalized before the budgeting process started, so it couldn't be considered, uh, projected revenue. So it's unanticipated revenue. I believe the threshold is $10,000 or more requires a public hearing. Anything less than $10,000, the board merely needs to put it on their agenda, vote to accept it, and in this case, we're asking you to accept and allow us to expend it.
With that said, then I'd like to move that we, uh, that we, uh, pursuant to RSA 31: 91-B to accept and expend unanticipated funds in the amount of $5,000 for the sale of town-owned property for tax map 12-1-1, located off of Thornell Road, to Michael Ryan Norman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. Any discussion? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be unanimous. Tax veteran land use change for timber.
Move to sign the Veterans Tax Credit for Tax Map 13-3-8-15, beginning tax year 2023. Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous.
Move to sign the Veterans Tax Credit for Tax Map 10-2-12, beginning tax year 2023. Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Manifests.
Well, we have, uh, land use tax and timber tax.
Move to approve the Tax Collector's Land Use Change Tax Warrant for Tax Map 1-1-2 in the amount of $10,000. Second.
Seconded by Joe Simone. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to sign the Timber Cut Yield Tax for Tax Map 9-6-18 with a value of $6,691.34. Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Move to sign the Requisition 2023-010 in the amount of $1,843.08 for new network switch for the fire department to be installed by Armon. Funds to come from the Cable Revolving Fund.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just keep going.
Yeah, you're on a roll.
Move to sign, uh, Meta Manifest dated April 25th, 2023, in the amount of $819,666.71, of which $755,030 goes towards April 2023 Sandborne Regional School District. Payment in $81.25 goes to ARPA. Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to sign Cable Revolving Fund dated April 25th, 2023, in the amount of $6,923.91. Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to sign Payroll Manifest for Pay Period, April 9th through the 22nd, 2023, with a pay date of April 27th, 2023. Total payroll is $54,068.98, which includes $714.98 ARPA administrative costs. Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Move to sign Corrected Payroll Manifest in the amount of $916.21, with a pay date of May 1st, 2023. Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor? Aye.
Move to accept the public meeting minutes. I'm skipping, am I skipping?
No, I think.
All right. Move to accept the public meeting minutes dated April 18th, 2023, as written. Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
New and old build, um, excuse me, new and old business. Gail Harris, trust update.
I wanted to give the board an update as to, uh, my last update, when I said we had contacted the people. Uh, this past Tuesday morning, Robin and I had a phone conversation with Eileen LaRose from BMO Wealth Management, the administrator of the Harris Fund, and she, and the following was discussed. Eileen sent us the attached summary of the trust, which outlines the provisions of said trust, along with the copy, copy of the original document dated July 28th, 1919. She further advised the following. Emma Susan Gale set up the trust for the benefit of her community, Newton, New Hampshire, to memorialize her father, Dr. Jonathan Greeley Gale, uh, the side note that, uh, our library was named after him, and her mother, Susan Gale Courier, oh, Susan Courier Gale, excuse me. Emma died in Chicago, Cook County, on 6/1/19, and her will is dated 1917. Emma created the trust, funded it with $25,000, and to access the funds, recommendations are sent in writing from the selectmen. Emma was born in Newton, and she and her family had a. Emma was born in Newton, and she and her family had a strong affliction for our community. She also has descendants who signed the Declaration of Independence. She further indicated that the last time the fund was accessed, was accessed was in May of 2019. And since then, the account generates approximately $4,000 annually. However, as income has been transferred to principal over the years, she believes that there is approximately $12,000 to $50,000 of income that has been transferred to principal. We receive a quarterly, a quarterly statement with respect to the fund activity. And Eileen further advised that the intent of the grantor may exceed beyond the sick and poor, given the right circumstances. Along with that, she put a Article III of the will, which basically states, states what the, it basically states the same thing, what the fund was created for. And the bottom line was that it was for the greatest good of the town, for the, for the sick and poor.
So am I reading this right? There's $178,000 in this fund right now?
That's what the, that's what the fund is, yes. And we're only allowed to use the interest based upon the needs of the sick and poor.
Sure. And you guys, not you, specifically you, but Newton didn't know about, or forgot about this fund for five, four years?
No, I believe it's been in there, but it's one of those things where nobody really knew too much about it. And I basically found it by accident. I noticed it by accident when, after you folks went, the original, last board of selectmen went through the storage area and weeded out a lot of stuff. There was a whole box over there. It was sitting underneath there, and it said trustees of the trust fund. And I said, wow, where is that? Because I'm, I'm, as a past trustee, we were missing a couple of years worth of records, not knowing where they are. So I looked through it, and I saw all this information about the Harris Fund. So I just did some asking and found out, yes, we do get a, we do get a statement. But not too many people knew what it was for. So now we, now we know exactly what it's for.
The key thing to remember, though, is because it's a trust, we're limited as to usage.
Yes, definitely.
And you mentioned 2019. We don't have to mention who it was, but there, when that happened in 2019, the town administrator at the time, we had this issue with a resident.
Sure.
And she mentioned, let's look into the Harris Trust, maybe they would qualify, and they did.
Yeah.
And we're able to help it. But it's, it's, it's one of those things, if you don't, you know, get the word out, then we probably don't know about it. The, the key cog in this to me is, is our, our welfare officer.
Exactly.
If she, she knows, I've chatted with her recently about it, she knows about it. So if she had a candidate, she would be able to come to us.
Right, sure. Well, the good thing is now we know it's available, and so we can, you know, we can assess the needs based upon that.
Right, right.
And obviously, I won't mention names, but I have talked to our welfare officer. And there is a definite candidate for this. Joe knows who I'm talking about. Fire Department has had some issues in storms where we've had to do rescue-type missions. So it, I don't know the process of how we're going to do this, but I should reach out, or Tina should reach out and see if we can't help this particular person.
Definitely.
Sounds like a plan.
Yep.
Thanks, Trish. Thank you, Joe.
So more to follow on this, and we'll just keep you abreast of anything that goes on.
Nope, sounds very good.
Excellent.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Joe, is there an application process?
As far as I know, the administrator said we need to, as a board, we need to submit a letter to them. And their board reviews it and sees if the need is there.
And we had a question from somebody in the audience to make sure that the motion involving the accepting and spending of unanticipated revenues is consistent with New Hampshire RSA 31:95-B. I believe that was right into the record, and if not, we should insert it. Okay with that?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
And if that resident is who I think it is, I think she's
It is.
Good on, good on her, she's still helping us.
Thank you, Diane.
She stays muted, but, you know.
She knows who she is. Newton Age Friendly Community Survey.
Yes, I am on that, on that, serving on that committee of volunteers. And this past week, we went through, we went through a briefing and reviewed some of the questions that they want to put out. And one of the things that they asked is if the board of selectmen would, they are going to, well, let's put it this way. They're going to put an ad in the, in the Carrigetown News, you know, relative to the survey and where it's available and everything. And they were looking to get the, to get a line in there from the selectmen with their support, showing their support. So basically with that, I just drafted a little, a little one-liner over here, and I'll read it to you. It says, "The Newton Board of Selectmen encourages our residents to take the time to complete the survey as it will assist the town in understanding future needs." If that's okay, if we need to edit it or any way.
It sounds good to me. Sounds great.
Yep. So, so be it with our blessing.
Well, someone make a motion, so illegal. Do we need a motion?
I would move to add the line as drafted by Selectman Simone to the ad for the survey.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Good, very good.
So moved. Thank you, Joe.
I do have one other thing that I'd like to bring up. And if it's okay.
You're on a roll.
Okay, good, thank you. Over the past couple of years, it's been, we've, the selectmen have always said that we want to establish some goals and objectives. And I was just wondering if we can maybe continue along with that, if it's okay with everybody? And maybe see where we can go from there, so we can possibly add that.
You stole, you stole the thought out of my
Well, you had the parking lot last year, you mentioned the parking lot.
Well, no, the, the, but specific to the goals, right? Because if, if, you're right, I was going to bring it up tonight. Because if you read the town report this year, as the chairman, when I wrote up our thing in the town report, I, I said, these are the goals we agreed on, I think it was in April. And this is how we did against the goals. And I think we should do that next year. And, and maybe that's a, maybe that's a homework thing, not for tonight to figure it out. But if we all go off and come up with two or three goals.
Come back with a couple, yeah, that'd be great.
And then come back in the next meeting, and we can affinatize that to
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds good.
I'm done.
Very good. And then we have discussion on Old Home Day and Touch a Truck discussion.
I, I didn't put that in there, I don't know.
I was wondering what that was on there.
I didn't know if you wanted to say anything. So Mr. Conley contacted me. And so this, I guess, they were thinking about maybe doing a two, two-day event, Old Home Day, which we only do one day.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I know exactly what you're going to say. And can we, can we table this for a rec meeting? Because, because this is, this is down-in-the-weed stuff. But, you know, it's, the rec commission has been talking about making Old Home Day two days and have Touch a Truck one day. But, but I don't think we need to add, you know, granted, it's only 7:18, you're doing a great job. But this is probably down-in-the-weed stuff that I don't think we need on this agenda. But it's, it's all good. I mean, it's good news, but it's, we don't have the right people here to
I just want it noted, Mr. Conley, that I did bring it up as you requested. And, and Matt, Matt was the one that's saying, shh, we'll take care of it with the rec department.
My phone's ringing now, it's probably So, but it's all, it's all good, but we need some key players, I think, for this.
Sure. All right, is there any other old news or new news that anybody would like to bring up or discuss while we're here? Jim?
We had posted for a non-public session to take place right after the public portion of the meeting ends. Based on the, the type of business that was going to be discussed, I'm going to recommend that it's all public information and should be discussed publicly. And that is hiring two employees for the fire department. Probably to replace the people that are leaving, Chief.
That's fine.
Add on, okay. So you have the document in there? And I would encourage you to make two motions, one for each new hire. And just read the information that's been provided by the chief. And then you don't have to stay here any longer when this meeting ends.
But I, I think the key thing to note for the board is that if you do have questions that would fall under reputation, then we can always, we can always make the motion to go into a non-public. But, but, you know, for me, at least one vote is, if the fire chief has screened these individuals and he wants to hire them, a non-public session would just end the same way. We would, we would be voting to accept them. We've done this with him before. They're all on, any employee is on a probationary period and all that good stuff, so.
Right, and they have to make certain qualifications.
Exactly. Let me see if I can
Do you? If I could see that, please? Thank you. Chief?
Good evening. Just a touch quick on what you had said. Mr. Chair, anyone who's hired, who has an EMS title at the end of the name, gets vested by the EMS coordinator. Okay, so it's twofold.
Right.
Firefighters are on my half. He's, he's the fire department's HR person. Okay? So what we are asking is, we're trying to fill the call side. These two individuals would like to come on as call firefighters. Both are full-time firefighters in communities right next door. One is a paramedic. The other is a paramedic in mass, EMT. The Tyler, Taylor?
Yep.
He is working on getting his national for the state of New Hampshire. Once he gets that, then he will be a New Hampshire paramedic. So if you look at both of them, they both have the same credentials, just base pay is the same, just the hourly rate at the bottom has changed. Because one is being hired as a firefighter, paramedic, the other one's being hired as a firefighter, basic. Both of them would have to take, obviously, six months probation, which is the town's policy. They'd have to have the background checks, and they would also have to go have physicals taken. Because per the board of selectmen several years ago, the board voted that any firefighter who has had a physical within two or three years, I forgot what it was, a firefighter physical, not a health physical, the board would accept it. Both of them have been career firefighters for longer than that. So I would make the recommendation the board vote to appoint both of them with those stipulations, physical, query, and six months, which is town policy.
You got that, Robin? Those are the stipulations?
All right, so I'm going to move to hire Candace Pelletier as a firefighter medic, grade seven, step 12, with a base pay rate of $1,535 with certifications. Total hourly pay of $21,85 per hour, pending a background check, physical, and under a six-month probationary period.
Seconded by Joe. Any discussion?
Chief, did you say these were both on-call?
Correct. They're not
So they're not part-time, they're not full-time, they're on-call?
There is no full-time at all in the fire station.
Sure.
There's one part-time, which is myself. Then you have your per diems
Yep.
That fill, that are there during the day, and then the on-call.
Okay.
The paid, they're actually called paid-on-call, I don't want to insult anyone. They're the ones that assist the per diems. They're the ones that come out at 2:00 in the morning when there's nobody in the station.
Sure.
That's who you're relying on, that's what we're having the issue with.
Okay.
That was my discussion.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous.
I will also move to hire Taylor Pousard as an EMT, basic grade seven, step 12, with a base pay rate of $1,535 with certifications, totaling an hourly pay rate of $1,985 per hour, pending a physical and background check under a six-month probationary period.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we had a quick discussion, too, about maybe looking into getting a, another police cruiser that we'll have to talk about at a later date, correct?
Yeah, I have reports that I can pull up of current balances. It's a revolving fund or capital reserve that says police cruiser.
Yep.
Is, are you telling me the canine is already requesting his own cruiser? With air conditioning? I knew this would, I knew this would happen.
Go ahead, Chief.
I just had one other thing for the non-public, which was increase in the per diems.
We're in non, we're not in non-public.
Well, I know, since you did that.
Yep.
This has not mentioned, you know, names.
Yeah, right.
But it's on the, I'm so used to being everything non-public.
You're fine.
Then it goes non-public.
I thought you were going at a different rate. You're talking about pay rate, I'm cool with that, go ahead.
Yep.
Just want to make sure we can do it. I sent that. That was the actual, the first thing I sent in to be put on the agenda before the new hires was to change the rate of the per diems.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Don't worry. The next pay, well, we have two now, so it's not going to break the bank, so we can try to hire some more. We're the lowest.
So, so if, if I could summarize, right? We've had these per diem rates for almost two years? Has it been that long? Almost two years, again, to be competitive, right?
Correct.
So it sounds like what you're proposing is going up with that existing rate in order to compete.
Depending on the level. Basic would remain the way it is, firefighter, basic.
Which is how much right now?
20.
So that'll remain?
Firefighter, paramedic, and advanced is 20. We'd like to go 20 for firefighter, basic, 2250 for firefighter, advanced, 25 for paramedic. And we're still $5 less an hour for a medic than most places. Yeah, it was. But if you, we can do it at the next
I got no problem doing it right now. We're, I mean, we're up against it, we've already stated it. We all know the facts of what's taking place. So does anybody want to?
I would, I would just move to accept the chief's proposed changes in the per diem rates based on qualifications, period, end of sentence.
To start, next pay period.
Good idea, yeah.
I'll second that.
And that'll be seconded by Joe Simone. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Think we're done?
Yep, and then that's it, right? Check the other thing?
Just one announcement, if possible?
No, you're done.
No, just one.
Go ahead, Joe.
Just want to remind the residents that there is a townwide yard sale next Saturday, a week from this coming Saturday. And they can, they can register via the website.
Is there any way we cannot remind my wife?
My wife, my wife knows.
Is it already out there?
I think she just heard.
I think she did. And, and the only other thing for advanced planning is it's May 29th is Memorial, 29th, right?
Yes, Memorial Day.
So we'll be doing our, our new hybrid version of the parade. So the route will go out there soon, but they're going to start at 8 Merrimack Road with vehicles. They'll go through most of the town.
Yep.
And then at the corner of Highland and Woodyer, we're going to pick up marchers. So baseball, scouts, anybody else, elected officials are invited to march at that point. And then we'll end at Willow Grove Cemetery, per usual, and we'll have an honors ceremony there. So just advance planning, that'll all, the parade will step off at 10:00 AM from 8 Merrimack Road. So May 29th, mark your calendars. And I, and I'll say this, last year, it was a very nice day. And the folks that were in the vehicles said there were not many people outside to honor our veterans who were going by on the vehicles and stuff. So just as an advance, mark it on your calendar, there'll be, the veterans are invited, too, to ride along if they meet us at 8 Merrimack Road. So if you're home, I know people travel. If you're home, please put it on your calendars, get out there, applaud, you know, wave.
Wave.
Whatever it is, so.
My birthday, so you can all know.
We're not giving you a parade for your birthday.
I want a parade.
You get nothing.
Unless you're a veteran. But that's
All right, with that being said, we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:30 on the nose. Motion to adjourn.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
All right. So be it. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.